I'm going to try to restrict it to a three-minute limit since out of respect for everybody who's here tonight.
I understand.
Thank you.
Yeah. So, my name's Sam Parker, Wycomico County resident. Farm on the east side of Wycomico County. I'm the eighth generation to live on the same farm. And one of the things that worries me the most every day is, is will I be the last generation to be able to farm that land? Not because of a decision, management decision that I make, a financial decision that I make, but rather because of some state or local legislation that puts an end to my family farm. I try to be reasonable. I recognize that legislation comes along over time. Certainly, there's much more today than there was from my great-great-great-grandfather that would have farmed that land prior to the development of Wycomico County. I just ask that you keep me and others just like me in mind as you move forward, whether it's on this decision or any other decisions going forward. Thank you.
Any other public comments?
So, Charles Wright, Wycomico County, Mordell Springs. Everybody knows pretty much who I am. During my tenure as the Farm Bureau President for six years, they called me the DAFT cop. That's what I did the whole time. It wasn't, that time wasn't about tank, it was about application. Had meetings with Hala and Delmar, the DPI back then. We had Denali there, had all the integrators there. And I asked, and the president of Denali in this area, the man in charge, I asked him, he talked about, they didn't land apply in the northeast above us. And I said, why is that? Well, we just don't do it. So after I asked him three times in a row, which is going to lead to Josh, it's because of population, the amount of people. The, I'm not a regulatory person, but this whole issue is I've got a right to farm, but I've got a right and responsibility to be a good neighbor. And that's what I want to be. The group that I've been lucky enough to be in Farm Bureau with for, since 1990, we've worked our butts off to keep the image, not just the image, but we are good stewards of the land. And I did stand up. I didn't like it all for the chicken industry in 2016. I've carried a lot of order for the chicken industry that I don't like. But I did it. But this is different. And you can have all those buffers you want, because I can tell you, I can smell that tank from my house and I'm five miles sometimes. So then you think about that buffer and those people that live there. Because I talked to the man that owns the tank, told me he owns hell-deep and heaven-high. I said, that's damn great. Keep it in that cone and it won't be a problem. It's just, there's technology coming that's here. And what the, the problem is they're taking the path of least resistance. Whatever's the easiest way to get rid of the product, and Joe, I'll tell you why they get the product, because they get paid to put it on farm. Ain't no farmers that are, they're buying chicken manure. They're paying you to take a problem. So that's, that's a little bit different. That is a waste. And we're the only state that looks at it as a sole amendment also. But I just ask you to remember that we need to be good neighbors. And I don't want this to be the hill we die on when we really need these citizens to stand up for something. Let's say mine there wants to add on some more chicken houses. Where are they going to be? Are they going to be in your camp? You didn't care about their, their quality of life at their home? When the next chicken, you know, we want to build more chicken houses? Are they going to be in your camp? Or they're going to be on the other side? Just be careful which hill you want to die on. Thank you for your time and discussion.
Mr. Wright.
Sheldon Chesney, I'm a resident of Wycomico County. Have been a farmer raising poultry for 34 years in Wycomico. I'm not here for poultry companies here tonight. I'm here for the farmers that are coming up, for people that want to farm. My biggest concern is right to farm. And I, I don't care about DAFT tanks. I care about the folks that have been exposed, but we need to regulate them and we need to regulate them in the A1 district and keep them away from people there. It's not an industrial. When you put it industrial, you're putting it on top of minorities. And as was stated earlier, too close to schools, too close to the city. It needs to be well-regulated and industrial. I don't think you'll ever see another DAFT tank, I'll be honest, if people could even build it. I don't think anybody's going to do it after what's happened. But farmers that are coming up and the environmental challenge that we face out here every day. You know, what's next? You can't spray your peaches? You can't, you can't add a piece to your house? I mean, this is, this tank is an agricultural structure. A chicken house is an agricultural structure. You know, somebody's orchard is agricultural. Do you really want people coming in regulating everything that happens in ag? And this is what this opens the door to. When you challenge the right to farm law, you're challenging something tremendous. And I hate to see farmer against farmer. And it has created a situation of farmer against farmer out here. It shouldn't happen. But I think this council has to carefully consider what you're doing and how you're doing it, because you're challenging right to farm. And that's where I am, period. Thank you.
Chesney.
I'm Pamela Little. My husband and I have a residence about three-tenths of a mile from that DAFT tank. It affects our lives greatly. I get migraines from the smell of it. I'm down for three to four days at a time. I have to stay inside and it makes me ill. I don't wish this on anyone. I don't wish anyone to have to deal with the smell of this. I don't have anything against farming. My grandfather was a farmer in Oklahoma. I've lived on a farm. I don't have a problem with farmers. I have a problem with the stench. I have a problem with how it affects our everyday lives. And I don't wish this on anyone in the future. So if you can put it somewhere where it's far away from residents, that would be great. If there's some kind of compromise that you can come up with that'll please the farmers so that they can farm and we can still have a way of life where we don't have to deal with this stink and the effects on us, that's great. Find a compromise if you must. But don't put anybody else through this like we've had to deal with on Porter Mill. That's what we're asking. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Mark Cropper, 6200 Coastal Highway, Suite 200, Ocean City, Maryland. I'd like to make a comment about the law very, very briefly. And I don't think I necessarily disagree with what you've heard from council before you, but I'm going to clarify it just a bit, I believe. First, soil amendments, soil conditioners, DAFT, it's an agricultural product. It's legal in the state of Maryland. It's regulated by the State Department of Agriculture. Because it is an agricultural product, to be applied to agricultural lands. But to do it effectively, you have to have storage of that material. Regarding the issue of preemption, which has been brought up by several council members, the law on preemption is generally state law preempts by implication local law, where the local law deals with an area in which the state legislature has acted with such force that an intent by the state to occupy the entire field must be implied. Under the Maryland Agricultural Code, Section 6-223, it reads, under regulation of fertilizer and its application, except for enforcement provided under Section 8, that's 8035G of this article, the department, meaning the Department of Agriculture, has the exclusive authority to establish standards regulating fertilizer and its application to turf. Subsection B reads, "A local government entity may not adopt laws, regulations, ordinances, or standards regulating fertilizer and its application to turf." Again, I've heard several of the council persons indicate that they believe this area of the law is preempted by the state, but at the same time, you're talking about limiting or prohibiting the storage of it. Well, the storage of it is necessary for the use of it. And the application of it, I see Councilman Hastings disagreeing. I respectfully disagree with you. And if it is essential as an agricultural product, it's got to be reasonable to use. It's got to be practical and pragmatic. I agree with the sentiment by some that it's not appropriate to have limit these tanks to the industrial. Well, one, I don't think it's appropriate at all to ban it. In fact, I think that is preempted and it would be unenforceable. Two, because of all the reasons indicated, I don't believe it's appropriate in the industrial zone. I think Mr. Cannon has expressed that very effectively. I think the proper way to regulate this is to direct these tanks in the industrial zone with appropriate safeguards and by special exception. The whole purpose of this special exception process is to determine on what site such uses are and aren't appropriate. As you may or may not know, a special exception is deemed a presumptively permitted use. But the whole purpose of the special exception process before the Board of Appeals is to determine whether that presumption, in fact, is appropriate on a particular piece of property. And that's where it becomes site-specific. And the Board of Zoning Appeals with its authority can consider all the characteristics of the site, including the neighbors, the road network, and otherwise. And there may be many sites where such tanks aren't appropriate, but there are many sites where they are. And I would suggest the tanks should be closely located to where the use and the material is being applied. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cropper. Any other comments?
My name is Lynn Mitchell. I live on the east side of Wycomico County in District 3. I'm here tonight to express some dissatisfaction with Parks and Recreation. I recently took my granddaughter to-
Excuse me, if you could get closer to the mic, because we want everybody here what you have to say.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, I recently took my granddaughter to Winter Place Park after picking her up from daycare. The kids enjoy the playset there that had three playslides and a fire tower. When we got there, the place had been removed and a much smaller one has been put in its place. It's quite puny in the enclosed, much area designed for a larger unit. You probably could have three to four kids safely on this unit now. Were opposed to the other one, you could probably have 10 or 12 kids. I called Steve Miller, the Parks and Recreation Division, and was informed that it had been replaced. I wish I had asked him why it was safe to play on it one day, but there were no restricted barriers, no takeoff, and that it wasn't fit for my kids to play on the second day. My question to him was, what happened to the play equipment that was there? And why couldn't it have been donated or bought at a lower price for some other facility to, to enjoy? I am actively trying to find playground equipment for a private Christian school here in Wycomico County. It's very expensive. I have looked into it. We could have used it, fixed anything that would have been broken or concerning on it, and agreed by letter that Parks and Recreation would not have been held liable. Mr. Miller told me because of liability, they could not do that. He suggested that I look on govdeals.com to inquire. The Winter Place Park ground, by the way, wound up in the landfill, cut up into pieces. Our next adventure took us to Willards Ballpark Playground, that is also funded and partially maintained by Wycomico County Parks and Rec. When we arrived there, it looked like inner-city Baltimore. There was grass that was growing up everywhere, weeds and poison ivy growing through the damaged fences. The concession stand needed painting and repairs. There was so much grass in the playground area that my kids didn't even want to stay and play. I called Parks and Recs and told them how nasty it looked. The young lady informed me that the town of Willards took care of it. So I called Robin at the town office. And Robin told me that Brandon White usually handles it. So a couple of days later, I got up with Brandon White. And he told me his mom and dad, who happened to be my age, are doing the best they can with that area. He also told me that Parks and Recs didn't allow them to have the softball tournament there this year, which forfeited $10,000 of much-needed funds for upkeep and repairs. Imagine that. I went to Pittsfield Playground, located on Railroad Avenue, on Thursday, August 31st, and the weeds are also grown up in there. We have absolutely nothing in Powellville for our kids, nothing. We have a pavilion at the Mill Pond with eight picnic tables and a locked bathroom. We don't have a stocked fish pond. We have a very dilapidated dock, no playground, and no swings. We have to take our kids to Willards or another playground in the area. In fact, we only have a church, a firehouse, and a Pepsi machine that gets filled once a week. I spoke with Pam Wade at the Board of Ed a while back about the playground equipment that was at Pittsfield. And Pam told me the same thing, that there's a liability issue. It has to be replaced every 15 years or so. But it's funny how for two years, nobody was allowed to play on it because of COVID lockdowns. I rode by Beaver Run School the other day and noticed that their state-of-the-art playground bought and paid for with 50% of my tax dollars. Wonder where their used equipment landed. Larry Dodd is aware of some of this. I talked to him a couple of weeks ago. I addressed some concerns. I was asked to come. I'm here to speak. Here's my point. If the county's going to remove the playground equipment that is still good and usable, put it up for sale, donate it, let somebody buy it or use it, and we will release the Park and Recreation Department from all liabilities. Times are tight right now and people are trying to do what they can for all the kids in Wycomico County. I asked Mr. Miller if there were any other playgrounds that were being upended, and he told me not to his knowledge. Pretty sure that's part of his job to know that. I'm not trying to cause problems. I'm just trying to figure out if there's a way that we can all be good neighbors all the way around. And if there is equipment that's coming down and it's still useful, let somebody use it or buy it or donate it. Any questions?
Put onto a question and answer on public comments.
Okay.
It's just reserved for that. Vice President Davis is asked to make a comment.
To your question, where the money's coming from, the Board of Public Works, the state of Maryland, has just approved $123,000 for playground equipment that's going to Pittsfield. So you're going to probably see some coming in the coming months down there.
I know there has been a grant that has been issued for Willards also.
Yes. We'll send you the link. If you give, if you ask Ms. Hurley, if you give her your information, we'll send you the link of the whole list.
The whole list of all the parks that are going to get some new equipment and stuff throughout the county.
Thank you. My grandkids would appreciate that.
My name is James Nguyen. I'm a Wycomico County resident. I was just recently down in District 2, over by Roaring Point. And I walked the beach and I like to go out there every now and then. And I couldn't help but notice the piles of trash out there. The trash can's overflowing and the, where you put your fishing line, there's, there's a big four-inch PVC pipe where you're supposed to shove fishing line. It's full of beer cans and there's cans piled up next to them. And, you know, the Roaring Point's a beautiful beach and it's a place where we take our, our kids and our families and we love to enjoy it. It shouldn't be a place that, you know, looks really trashy. I, I just wanted to bring that to the council's attention. And, you know, maybe we can get somebody down there to pick, pick up the trash. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nguyen.
Good evening. Holly Porter, Executive Director of Delmarva Chicken Association, located in Georgetown, Delaware. Again, appreciate all of the comments, all of the discussion that has gone on. Also would say that extremely disappointed in recognizing that the Delmarva Chicken Association, a 1,600-member trade association, also has farmers and growers from Wycomico County as our members. So it's not just one organization that represents farmers and growers in the county as well. Again, very concerned about, not so much specific to the DAFT tanks, but where this could lead. I think these discussions have been heard time and time again. I do have to agree that, that is why there are a number of us that are sitting here, is the concern about what's next. We fight this often as DCA in Annapolis, and I certainly never thought that we would have to be fighting it in Wycomico County, where agriculture and the poultry industry is the number-one industry. So again, a lot of concerns about putting a ban on an ag storage structure that holds an ag product that is no different than a chicken house or manure storage or a commercial fertilizer storage tank. Thank you.
Ms. Porter. Any other public comments? Yes, sir.
Mr. Council President, members of the council, good evening. Three years. Three years this chamber has been debating, discussing DAFT and the DAFT tanks. The concerns that the community voiced about the abomination of Porter Mill Road have mostly come to fruition. I recall that about 25 years ago, this county leadership worked diligently with concerned citizens to stop the importation of commercial waste from New Jersey. No one knew what the trucks from New Jersey were dumping into the private West Road disposal site. Yet here we are again, with waste being brought into our county that no one really can document what's in it or from where it comes. The placement and usage of these types of tanks earmarks Wycomico County as being an industrial waste disposal-friendly place. And I need to emphasize, I come from an agricultural background. I've hauled enough chicken manure to fill the civic center four times. This, this stuff, and I respectfully disagree with our friends from DPI, this is industrial waste. I would like to mention that Purdue, at their Seaford Energy Site, has taken the best approach to handling this material. Their efforts to reduce the impact of this waste product on others should be followed by all companies. If you were to do a cost-benefit analysis on the tank currently in use on Porter Mill Road, I'm certain that the findings would reflect that the citizens have both directly and indirectly subsidized this industrial waste process. I'm certain such analysis would also support that has significantly reduced the value of the surrounding homes. I also mentioned the cost and man-hours to county staff, to the county government, and the resources from the various departments that have had to been dedicated to this topic. I applaud the council's actions on this topic at this time, and I support the legislation being considered respectfully submitted to you. It does not go far enough. As reported in both the Baltimore Sun, the Daily Times, there are two community wells at this time in our county being monitored by the Maryland Department of Environment for overly high PFSA concentrations. These are wells that supply drinking water to entire communities. PFSAs are man-made contaminants introduced by leaching into groundwater. There are many nasty things in DAFT that should not be in our groundwater or our drinking water. I, when I reviewed the Tolba County analysis that they had done on DAFT sampling, I believe that the council has that. If they haven't, they will receive it, I believe, this evening, if it hasn't already been sent. It was alarming to me and should be to everyone. It increased my concerns for the contamination of drinking water and other natural resources being affected by the DAFT application and storage process. I encourage the council to consider including in this legislation or in a separate legislative initiative, provisions for routine monthly tank site inspections to detect spillage and onsite, onsite groundwater sampling to be conducted by the appropriate county agency. This would not interfere with any of the state regulations. It's not trying to stop the storage of the- I also would recommend that we should not be naive enough, no one should be naive enough, to believe that the waste disposal industry holds the safety of our communities and the citizens as a priority over profit. And I thank you for your diligence, diligent attention to this matter. Good evening.
Hello. My name is Alex McCray. I live on Riggin Road. It is a nice place to live. But I do want to encourage you to, I have all this stuff written. I could actually just read that. Good evening, members of the county council and the public. My name is Alex McCray. My wife and I live on Riggin Road and, near an existing DAFT storage facility. I'm speaking tonight to urge you to enact a total ban on these dissolved air flotation tank, storage tanks. We'll begin with a description provided by the good people at Denali Water Solutions of a description of the DAFT process. Inside of a poultry processing facility, meat is tossed, turned, tumbled, sliced, diced, washed, and cut up. Throughout this process, very small bits of meat, fat, and other proteins and fibers particles are detached. This is the beginning of a long journey for these small particles. Particles flow to a drain and mingle with other discarded parts of the chicken. Along with these larger chicken parts, like feet, heads, entrails, and feathers, the small particles work their way to a screening room. Here we find, we find large rotating screens tasked with recovering valuable proteins, attached fats, and feathers. These recovered materials are sent to rendering facilities. And typically, a rendering facility is an industrial. That's not, nobody's arguing about that, I don't think. People, well, I'm not asking questions. Rendering facilities are industrial facilities and, oh, hold on, I added that. Sent to rendering facilities and typically converted into different types of meals to be used as animal feed ingredients. It's very good. This is all recycling and I'm a big fan of recycling and reducing our load on this earth. These screens capture particles in the range of 2/100ths to 4/100ths of an inch and larger. The particles have passed through the screen, then flowed to wastewater for further treatment. While it may sound like this water is typical wastewater stream at this point, in fact, most conventional aerobic wastewater treatment plants cannot treat this water directly due to its high concentration of solids and nutrients. In most cases, the meet all state and federal discharge limits. Additional reductions in loading must be achieved before reaching the wastewater plant's biological treatment system. So that is what is being removed and that is what is in these DAFT. It's a, I believe that had other evidence that was, the water from this system is a Class IV. It's not potable water, but it is, still has, it's better, but it's still not clean enough. And then they really, so to do the DAFT, they have these particles in the water and more, they release bubbles. The bubbles attach to these particles. They lift the particles up and that way they're able to get the water even cleaner. That's where it becomes the Class IV, Class IV non-potable water, but can be distributed into the stream. So it's good, they're getting this stuff out. And then they have a semi-slurry that's going to form on the top. It's called DAFT sludge or just sludge. I'd call it DAFT sludge. I don't want to, I don't want to offend any people that are in favor of just sludge. So DAFT sludge, very specific. Scraped the sludge into a collection hopper tank. So that's from a demystifying sludge from Denali. Definition of industrial wastewater works as provided by the Code of Maryland. Industrial wa, this is from Section 26060103. This is in Comar. I'll send a copy of this- I'll send a copy of this to you so it has my links. Industrial wastewater works means a facility used to collect, store, pump, treat or discharge, discharge any waste substance that results from a manufacturing process, a business process, or the development of natural resources. So this industrial wastewater, it's not a, it is from the poultry industry because they're using it, they're cleaning it up, but it is not in itself an ag thing. It is separate. It's still an industrial product. If it's an industrial product for sale, but it's still an industrial wastewater product. Uh, I applaud them for finding some way to make money off of it and that is good, but we still need to regulate this thing because it's more than just, um, it's more than just an ag product. These industrial wastewater products are used as soil amendments and regulated by the Maryland Department of Environment. The quality of the, uh, DAF storage contents are inspected once a year. If it were a more common agricultural process, there would be more farms in Wycomico County and the surrounding counties utilizing similar, similar storage tanks. In 2017, there are 494, 494 farms with an average farm size of 179 acres. That was from, um, a, um, Department of Agricultural fact sheet about Wycomico County. Only two of the tanks are located in Wycomico County with only one seen current use for the staff storage. Uh, the zoning code of Wycomico County, and correct me if I'm, if this one's not up to date, I forgot the date on this one. Uh, zoning code of Wycomico County provides that I-1 zone is for light industry and no use may be permitted, which may be detrimental to the area because of odor, smoke, dust, toxic fumes, fire noise, explosion outsourced, outside storage or toxic or hazardous chemicals. It's from page 58, from the one I found. This would leave industries that may be characterized as having those qualities to be designated I-2. Fertilizer manufacturing, mixing and storage is restricted to the I-2 zone. That's on page 110. I believe it's in a table of acceptable uses for, um, for Wycomico County. Uh, the county landfill is also located in an I-2 zone. The current DAF storage tank generates odors five or six days of the week compared to the landfill, which is every day of the week, but this is, uh, this is just my experience with it. The increase of traffic is also an important consideration when determining if a facility should be located in an area. Porter Mill Road and Riggin Road are both categorized as local roads according to, um, highway character, uh, federal highway characterization of roads. Local roads are undivided roads that can vary in width from eight to 10 feet. These roads are not qualified to carry the additional heavy truck traffic that results from transporting the DAF industrial wastewater products to the storage facility. The traffic on the road has increased significantly as a result of trucks accessing the facility. Also stacking for these tanker trucks awaiting offloading can extend out on the Porter Mill Road and obstruct the public's access to safe usage of the road. A DAF storage facility requires a significant entrance and egress to facilitate the traffic it will generate.
If you could try, if you could try to wrap it up, I appreciate it.
That's my next one. It says, "I want to conclude and strongly encourage you to enact a total ban on DAF storage tanks in Wycomico County. These storage tanks are industrial installations that generate significant amounts of odor and require substantial road enhancements to locate. Thank you for your time and consideration."
Thank you very much. Alex, you forgot your water bottle.
Oh, thank you, sir.
I saw him put it down there. I had a whole page here, but I think I can boil it down to something fairly simple in my mind at least. I think it's safe to say that we wouldn't be here tonight at all discussing this had that tank is there now.
You give your name?
Can you hear me?
Your name? I'm sorry, yeah, your name and, and.
I'm sorry, Jerry Pusey. I'm a 50-year resident of Porter Mill Road, 50, my 78 years have been spent there.
Thank you.
And I think it's safe to say that if that tank hadn't been put where it is, we wouldn't be here tonight. Had it been put somewhere where it did not impact the residential area, any residential area, we would not be here tonight. So it would seem to me that if there's a way to find, a way to put future tanks, if there are any future tanks, that absolutely will not impact the residential area, then why not do that? I don't know if this body has the, uh, power to, to okay or not okay the future installation of these tanks, but there is a tank there, somebody okayed it, and that same body, I would, they would have the power, the, to, to not allow any future tanks of this nature in this type of environment. And, uh, with that, I, I, the only thing I can add, I guess, is that, uh, I, I can't add any more emphasis to the impact of the smell that, that radiates from this tank. It is, and like, again, in 78 years, I've, I've never experienced anything like it.
Hi, I'm Pam Moszewski. I live on Porter Mill Road, about a half mile from the tank. You all know me. Um, I just want to, I was supposed to talk about something different, but I wanted to reply to Mr. Cropper, Cropper's comment about, um, the application, uh, apply storing of DAF. And, um, it got me thinking, well, what happened before the tank on Porter Mill Road? That DAF was being applied on those fields for, in the fields in Wycomico County long before that tank. So if that system worked, why all of a sudden didn't we have to have this tank? And it seems to me that it's kind of an obvious answer. It's because it makes more money for a small group of people. It makes more money for Valley Protein. It makes more money for Denali and it makes more money for the farmer who applies, who stores it, not applies it. I'm not anti-farm, none of us in the NAG group are anti-farmer, anti-chicken. I love eggs. Um, really do. And so that was, my thought was what was wrong with the whole system? They use their trucks, they put them on the field at the right time, the appropriate time, that's allowed by the law, and then it's gone. And so if that worked for a long time, why didn't one tank make us all go through this for three years, including you two? All go through this for three years? And it's obvious, the answer's obvious, it's all about money. And that's my, hopefully, last comment.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Good evening. I'm Carol Lannahou from Wycomico County. I wasn't actually planning to say much tonight, but I feel that it's important to correct the record on a couple of things. Everybody who is objecting to regulation here, objecting to the consideration of the compromise proposal that Mr. McCain introduced tonight is complaining about something else. They're saying, "Well, it might lead to X." Well, it must be those environmentalists behind all of this. It's the boogeyman approach to policymaking and it's not appropriate in, in a county that has rules about legislative procedure and transparency, in my view. I understand that the NAG group submitted a draft bill last Wednesday with a request that it be included in the briefing book. Is it there? No. What you received today was a compromise proposal, a, a more moderate proposal than what they submitted last Wednesday. Uh, and there's this great hue and cry that nobody's heard of it and nobody knows anything about it. Every member of this council received a, received a copy of what was, uh, submitted for inclusion in the briefing book, uh, and, and people are pretending they've never heard anything about this. You say you want a reasonable solution, a reasonable compromise, but you worked very hard tonight to avoid considering one. And what we're hearing about is, oh, they're trying to prevent us from applying this to the fields. Oh, they're, they're, they're violating the Right to Farm Act. We know that's not true. The Right to Farm Act has nothing to do with the storage of DAF waste. We haven't seen a legal analysis from, from, from either the council's own attorney or the county's attorney who is, who is representing the policy views of the Planning Department. And, uh, so it seems, it seems a little rich to be saying, oh, you know, we are taken by surprise, we can't possibly discuss this tonight. I, I think the council has a decision to make about whether you really do want a reasonable approach, which is what everybody who's been appearing before you for three years has been advocating, or whether you just want to insist on A1 for some reason. It certainly looks like it tonight. That, that list of, of setbacks and, and other bells and whistles that, that, that are included in the county's draft of the A2, uh, the A1 and the I-2 bills is a laundry list calculated to produce these maps. I, I would ask that the council look at the map that would be included by the, um, by the proposal that didn't get submitted, it didn't get considered tonight and consider whether that's a solution since we're obviously having trouble finding law to suggest that regulation is not appropriate. Thank you.
Thanks.
My name's Larry Keller. I live in Marjella Springs, near Mill Branch Road, an old home that was restored by King Burnett. Many of you know King, you know, all the years he was here. I'm born and raised agricultural, South Alabama, first one, and ever since Revolutionary War that was not a farmer. I grew up raising chickens, pigs, and just about everything we ate, we grew. I don't mind the smell of chickens. I, I, I was the first that ever left the agricultural and went to pharmacy school, moved to Baltimore. Boy, that was a cultural shock. I want to get back to my roots, I moved to the Eastern Shore, very much like where I grew up. But everybody has a right to grow their chickens. I admire them, I love them. You know, the Eastern Shore where it's agricultural base, it's like home to me. But I've got a right to be able to enjoy my property too, and I can't. My wife just moved to Canada to get away from this smell. It is that bad. She couldn't stand it anymore. So she won't be back until December now because the odor was so bad. I'm the pilot that's taking all the aerial pictures that you all have seen under the tank. I can smell the air and I live exactly 1.1 nautical miles northwest of that tank. Uh, I've measured that on the GPS on my airplanes when I've taken some of the pictures and the smell, anytime the wind is out to south, I can't even enjoy, I can't be out in my yard. So, uh, I asked my daddy, he used to say, "Put a lid on it. There's got to be some way to stop this odor and find a compromise to, so you can still fertilize your fields." But not without this odor. This odor is, is overpowering. I'm the one that's called it a cesspool. Someone referred to, you know, there's somebody that calls it a cesspool. I do, because I've had to dig, uh, uh, when, when sewage treatments, you know, septic tanks overflowed. I'm the one that had to have digged and put in new septic systems when I was a kid. So I know what the smell is. So that's what it reminds me of every time the wind is out of the south and especially in the summer when it's so warm. This thing was supposed to be used for four months. It's used year-round because I'm the one taking the pictures of it year-round. Thank you.
Comments? Okay, that concludes public comments. At this time, we open the floor for council comments.
I just want to thank everyone for coming in. I appreciate it and my decision on this, on the DAF tank was not made lightly. I've been speaking with citizens and farmers for past three years, actually, about it. So I, I do appreciate everyone coming in and I know there's that fear. I, I, I hear what you're saying, the fear of banning something like this, what's going to happen, but I can tell you, if we don't resolve this locally, Annapolis will. And it's not going to be just eliminating a tank, it's going to be much further than that.
Just look at your color.
So bringing this to conclusion is, is really, you know, we need to focus on it and get it wrapped up as soon as possible. Thank you all for coming in.
Yeah, I'll just say, of course, this is the, this is first reading, I guess it is. So we've got to have a couple more times that runs that. So if anyone, you know, I encourage everyone in the audience here, take a look at this, see what language is put together. And together we'll find a better, you know, we'll better tune this. This is not a final version, but, you know, we're going to get it prepared and get it ready and get it done because three years of, of dealing with this, we've tried to bring in all sides, all, all kinds of folks. We, as a council, I can say, have worked hard to try to, to find a good common ground approach. So we're going to finish strong and we're going to make that happen. Last thing I'll say, Mr. President, on a completely different note, this week we'll have our 350th Wycomico resident will have died from COVID. You know, I'd like to see Wycomico County reach out with the county executive's office to, um, to be one of the first counties to actually put forth some sort of memorial. 350 citizens is quite a lot. Um, I know other counties are thinking about doing the same, but I've known a lot of the folks who have passed away from COVID, including my half-sister and, and others. I think we, the county, or in Eastern Shore at least, should put together some sort of official memorial for all the folks who have died from that. Thank you.
Just real quick, I'll echo the previous comments, but, you know, thank everyone for your comments. So, you know, we, we, we've been listening, you know, we're going to get there, so it is, but it is time for us to be making a decision here and, you know, end of the day, as I said earlier, we need to make the best decisions, the best decision we can for the residents of Wycomico County, and we're going to do that.
Yes, I'd like to thank everyone that came out here and I, I too want to thank the people that, um, that congratulated the Delmar Little League World Series softball girls. That means a lot to that area and a lot of those girls came from all over the county, not just Delmar. So I want to thank Ms. Mitchell for coming out here and, um, speaking on the playgrounds or the lack of playgrounds in Powellville. Powellville is a really nice area. It's a gem and it does need, um, some sort of a playground for the kids so they don't have to go to different municipalities. So, um, all of us here on the council really do support the farmers and I tell you tonight, it really hit me right here. It seems like it's farmer against farmer and that's the last thing I wanted to see. So I, I hope and pray that we can come up with a compromise. I think we can. I don't think everybody's going to be happy, but we're going to be working on it and still continue to send your thoughts and your ideas to us. Thank you.
Yes, um, as Ben said, um, this thing is coming to a close. Unfortunately, it's not going to make everybody happy. Some people are going to be happy and some are not, but at the bottom line, we all going to have to live here together. And, um, keep sending in your comments, what you think, keep us abreast of how you feel so we'll know exactly how to approach this thing. It's like I said, it's not going to make everybody happy, but something has to be done. We've been kicking this can for three years. I'm sure enough tired of kicking it, so we need to resolve this thing as soon as possible.
Thank you.
Presidential comments. I'd like to thank everybody for coming out tonight and, and expressing your concerns. I'd like to also thank everyone who, who, who became so engaged in this process. Uh, I was in, I've been in the neighborhoods, I've talked to M.D., I've talked to Maryland Department of, of Agriculture, and I've tried over these last years to make sure that I, I listened to who was out there, what the concerns were being, to try to evaluate clearly what the options might be. And during this whole process, everyone was very helpful, very respectful. And I'd have to say that, long and short of it is, it's not always a black and white decision here. Sometimes you have to, I feel, always try to find some area where you can compromise. The DAF tank that we currently have, I hate it. I hate that DAF tank. I think it's an inadequate system. I think it's a plague in the neighborhoods. I just do. I'm sorry. When something smells like that, you have what is literally right or wrong and what is accepted and wasn't accept, wasn't accepted. I think there's something seriously wrong when you have this type of conflict and it can be resolved. The main reason I really wanted to go with option A1 is because, as Mr. Pusey, I think, was mentioning, if you'd taken this DAF tank and this DAF tank was in any of those areas in A1, we wouldn't have the neighbors here because it resolved that problem. So it would have helped, it would have helped solve that. So it would have helped, it would have helped solve that problem, but you would also allow the industry to continue as it might choose to, for the better of our community as a whole. So I just wanted to share that with you. As similar to what Charles said, the anaerobic digester in Seaford, I've visited that. Josh Hastings set it up for us to go visit the anaerobic digester in Seaford. Fantastic place. And that, I hope, at least for now, appears to be the wave of the future, and I'm thinking that that's where that will head, and it'll eliminate these meetings that we have to have. There always will be something else, I know, but at least it'll help in this line of zoning issues that we seem to face all the time. So I just want to let you know that I certainly did not turn a deaf ear to anyone. I listened very intently to what everyone had to say. I just felt that the compromise we were looking for here was a great compromise. Didn't happen, that's okay, and I enjoyed the engage, being engaged with the fellow council members and their thought process in making this come to a final decision. Pay attention to where we go from here. There'll be meetings, there'll be public hearings, where you'll also want to probably continue with input. That being said, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn, so we can go into open work session. I have to read the formal one, right?
Go ahead.
Hold on, Larry.
Okay.
I got to read it. Entertain a motion to adjourn from legislative session to go into open work session, followed by a closed work session to discuss the personnel matter regarding the duties, responsibilities, and pay of a specific employee in the sheriff's office to protect the confidentiality of the individual. Larry?
Go ahead.
Second. All's in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for coming.
Break.
Excuse me?
Break.
We're going to take a five-minute recess.
Did he give us a raise?
Call the meeting to order, back to order for legislative session 2022-19, September 6, 2022, Wycomico County Council. The first item on the open work session agenda, if I could have quiet, if I could, please? The first item on the agenda for the open work session is a proposed reallocation of CARES funding for the Ocean City Salisbury Wycomico County Airport. We have Mr. Tony Rudy here with us, the airport manager. Mr. Rudy, good to see you. What can we help you with?
Good evening. So if you remember, probably about a year ago, I think we met to reallocate some of the CARES funds. We're not changing a whole lot, but some of these projects have kind of evolved over time. We took our best guess when we did get the CARES funding to begin with. We did get the two additional grants, the coronavirus response and relief grant and the American Rescue Plan grant after that. We're able to use those funds from those two grants more for operational and maintenance expenses, so it has freed up some money for our projects, which the CARES grant can cover development, developmental projects at the airport. So really, what we're asking for is some changes to kind of three areas. We had two standalone projects, an aircraft rescue and firefighting building, and also snow removal equipment and maintenance building. So the aircraft rescue and firefighter building was designed, put out to bid, and it came in quite a bit over what our estimates were, with construction costs being what they are today. So we regrouped. Both of these projects are very important to us. Our facilities right now are inadequate, and we came up with the idea of combining these buildings, because they do share some common, common space in both of these buildings, such as, you know, training room, restrooms, break rooms, things like that. So we're moving forward with that, but again, it's going to, it's going to cost a little bit more, I think, than we originally planned for the two buildings, but we will have cost savings by combining those. The second is a fuel farm facility, and this was identified in our five-year CIP. We will be designing this and constructing this, hopefully before the CARES funds run out in about, it's less than two years now. The need for this is the facility that's on the airport now. It's owned by Bayland Aviation. They are underground storage tanks. I believe they're about 34 years old now. They're, they're a concern to the airport. They, the tanks are not leaking. They are safe. They are tested and looked at regularly, but I'm afraid if something were to happen to those tanks, we could be out of fuel for a period of time, which would not be good for both Peanose Airlines or any of our other customers at the airport. So with the CARES funding, we're looking to be proactive, creating a containment facility for a future, future fuel farm.
Thanks, Ed. Already double walled?
I believe they're single wall construction, but they have fiberglass coating over them, and I think they're surrounded by kind of a stone, which gives them drainage, but still, you could imagine our concern with just those being in the ground and the potential, the potential there is.
The operator of those tanks, he has them inspected, correct?
He does, yeah. From my understanding, he does either inspections or a regular inventory, which would, which would indicate, you know, if the tanks were leaking or not. So, yeah, he is responsible.
Does the Department of Environment get involved in that inspection?
Yeah, he has a permit through, through the Department of, Maryland Department of Environment.
I know before, you know, they tried to do this to run him out of business, basically. I was just wondering if that's the same.
No, this is, this is strictly planning for, planning for the future. At the, at the end of his lease, you know, I, I don't know, I wouldn't be comfortable with leaving those tanks in the ground any longer than that, but we're planning.
How long is his lease?
His lease comes up in 2025.
2025?
And then the third reallocation is from our automated parking system, which has been installed. It was not eligible for CARES money, but we had, we had other funds to pay for that.
So when you say remove the automated parking system, you're not physically removing the automated parking system? You're removing the $150,000 from the original request and the disbursement?
That's correct. And I would assume with some of these other projects not online yet, I'm sure we'll have an adjustment in the future, too. This is our, these are kind of our current needs.
The new fuel farm facility, a lot of what's been talked about over the few, over the last few years is the fact that there'll be a, a group that would come in. What do you call that? The group that comes in and deals with fuel and?
It's a, so what Bayland Aviation is, it's a fixed base operator.
FBO?
Yeah, FBO.
Yeah, a fixed base operation. So will this, I mean, if we, if we go ahead and start constructing a new facility like this, would it easily fit in with what we might want with an FBO, or would an FBO want to, you know, define their own terms?
So this is, there's really kind of two different models at airports. Either an airport can own the fuel facility, or someone like an FBO can own the fuel facility. This would be available for anyone's use, you know, whether it's Bayland or another company that comes in, or even if the airport decides to take over that operation by themselves. So this would be, we would have this, you know, containment area in place. I'm not sure at this point whether we will put the tanks in or not, or whether we would have, you know, whoever the vendor would be at the time, put the tanks in.
Or the total role of the FBO to maybe build their own facility, build their own fuel farm facility? That would be their whole package they would come in with, as opposed to us building it for?
Well, if we had this in place, we could, we could lease this facility to them.
I'm just wondering whether it'd be for us to build it, or whether we should have the, an FBO come in with a whole total package and do it themselves?
Well, I understand that.
Not feasible?
But that, like I said, we have, we still have a lease with Bayland Aviation until 2025. We have the funds available now to be proactive, get this facility up, build it, so whether it's, you know, another facility that comes in, they could lease it from us. Another option we're considering is the airport can take over this operation, which isn't unheard of, and we'd be keeping all the profit.
Okay. Any other questions? So where would we go from here, Ms. Phil?
Because these are capital projects, it requires an amendment to the capital improvement program, so we have to have a public hearing, and we can have that on September the 20th at 10:00 a.m.
This will be presented as one legislative bill?
It'll be a resolution.
One resolution?
Yes.
And not separate ones?
Correct, one resolution.
All right. Any other questions, comments? Mr. Rudy, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think they're watching the big game.
What's the score?
Put it up on that screen. Next item on the agenda is discussion of location for a new water tower for the town of Hebron. Mr. Wilbur is here and with company.
We've got the town of Hebron crew.
Oh, yeah, the whole crew. So I'm Colby Phippen, the president of the commissioners for the town of Hebron. I've got David Hooper over there, another commissioner for the town of Hebron, and then our town engineer, Bob Brow. So take it over.
Let me, you, have you distributed?
It's being circulated now.
It's being distributed, yeah. This was a little clearer picture of what the thought is.
No DAF tank.
No DAF tanks involved in this one. No. Okay, so what Hebron needs is to construct a new water tank for their water system, and they have located a potential site on the county property out there, which currently has a convenience center on it. That's the lighter white line area. They're proposed two sites. One would be right in the point, I would say, but that, talking with Mark Whitlock, that's not a preferred site, because we may be able to put a solar farm in there. The second site that was discussed was behind the convenience center, and that's the drawing that you have. It will require a road that would come through the convenience center, but Public Works thinks that was, that's doable and workable. Yeah. So Acton County Executive Pessoda is okay with a donation of approximately one acre for the Hebron water tank and the right-of-way in, but obviously, that's a question that involves the council also, and the question is to consider whether you wish to make it a donation or have it appraised and make it a sale.
The praise.
So what's the, so what's the price below donation?
Yeah. Well. So we would put it in, well, the executive would consider it surplus property. We'd have to declare it surplus. Right. And then, and then transfer it as a donation. Right. Comments?
I mean, this is the first time Hebron's ever come to us with anything.
Easy.
Yeah. The maintenance people, just a nice land.
Well, let's see now. We're getting ready to talk about a water and sewer plan.
I was waiting on it.
All right. Well, we're going to give up here.
You know, maybe there's some, a little bit of fair trade-off go here that, I'm sure you'll be willing to work with us when the time comes, right?
Absolutely.
Okay.
We know it's coming.
Yep.
Are you expanding your water system or?
So the exact situation that happened, our water tower was built in 88, I believe. It was installed with no bypass system. It was in desperate need of repairs. So we initially started this process, instead of creating a bypass, we were going to install a new water tower, so we could put this tower up, we could service the other one, and then we would have dual water towers, and it would serve for expansion in the future. Our current water tower got in such disrepair that we ended up having to take it off the grid, and we put it, we put in a temporary bypass system, and we just, literally just got everything finished up on it, so we're about to make it live again, but it's still something that in the future, we need something, because the bypass system was that we installed is a temporary bypass. It was crude. It wouldn't have worked in the wintertime, just worked in the summer, so it's good to have a backup for us in the future. So that's the goal.
Do you have enough water supply if there's a large fire in the town?
Yes. Yep. We've, I think we ran out once, and it was a hay fire in the middle of a field, and it just, they just exhausted the whole 300,000 gallon water tower.
So a new tank, an additional tank, will prevent that in the future?
We would never run out of water, unless it was something astronomical. Yeah.
Where this new tank's going in location to your old tank, will you be reversing the flow of water through the town when you put the new tank in?
No, they, they'll be equalized, and to the extent that we wanted to, we could, but it would stay, they'll, they'll operate, there'll be a well at each tank, and a water treatment is also included with it, so they'll, they'll operate in on and off modes.
Back in the late 70s, early 80s, one of our local municipalities built a new, put a new well and a tank on the other end of town from where they were before, and they reversed the flow of water through all their water pipes that had been there since the early 1900s, and filled everybody's hot water heaters up with rusty water. So just, you need to be cautious that could happen to you.
Very much so, yeah. The control systems and the elevation controls is all part of the model that we've created, and this is actually an excellent location, because we'll, we'll be able to balance pressures and flow throughout the town with these in the two locations, and it provides redundancy, which is encouraged by MDE and EPA, and it, it'll allow the town to comply with what's called the 10-state standards, which is providing adequate fire flows that you talked about and capacity for use.
I'm okay with donating.
Yeah, give me, give me a quick landmark, though, because I'm trying to, I've got the map up on my phone, but I'm just trying to, I look at, you know, this hard, this, it's kind of hard to tell on this, so I'm trying to.
Find, you find, find town of Hebron. You, oh, you see the triangle?
Yeah, I see the triangle with Wycomico County.
He's got you.
Yeah. Yeah, see your map right over there.
Mr. Wilbur, why do we have a piece of property in Hebron? Is there purpose to that property?
Convenience center.
It's a convenience center. I missed that. Only it's, it's a very large piece of property. Convenience center is on a small part of it.
So it's right, so it is where the triangle is, or whatever. Oh, I thought you said you weren't doing, okay.
The triangle is talking about was just.
He was just talking about that. Then I'm looking right at it now, okay. Yeah.
That was a piece of property that the county's owned for a long, long time. It predates me, anyway, so it's, you know, 37 years ago. So we only, we used to utilize a bigger footprint when we had a brush pile there and a metal pile and some other things.
I'm having trouble hearing him. Guys, sorry, sorry, go ahead.
So, so we used to have a brush pile there and a metal pile and some other things, and we've moved away from that. We put the metal in the bins. We take the brush to Salisbury, so we don't utilize that much area anymore. So to have the water tower, it's outside of our fenced-in area, is where they want to put the water tower, so it really has no impact on, on our operations whatsoever.
Just curious.
There's a question. You're talking about they'll have to put another access to come in there. Would that access still come off of Old River?
It would. Okay. By this proposal from the engineer.
Okay.
Come in by the, or through the convenience center and then to the tower.
We would, we would work with Public Works and come up with the actual plan and.
I'm fine with it, I just want to know how it came in, you know, how we're going to do that.
And then we, we would share probably a gate coming into it, but this site will be completely fenced and secured for the town.
Yep, I'm good with it. I'm good.
Yeah, anytime the, there's very few circumstances where we can really truly collaborate with the local towns and municipalities, so it's good to be able to help out. Heck, so that's great.
Absolutely.
We'll leave it up to you for the process. So we'll, we'll bring the appropriate legislation to you, the resolution, the surplus. All right, great. Good to see everybody.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Appreciate it, guys.
Appreciate you guys.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Mark.
Glad to be here.
Let's go home.